Welcome to the regular school board meeting for District 833. Today is Thursday, August 23rd, 2018 at 6:30 PM and we are in the District Service Center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota. 1.0 is roll call.
Petruska?
Here.
Heather Hirsch?
Present.
Michelle Whitty?
Here.
Katie Schwartz?
Here.
Sharon Van Leer?
Here.
Ron Caff?
Here.
Tracy Burnett?
Here.
2.0, would you please stand and join me for pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
3.0 is the approval of our agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Sharon and second by Pat, right? Welcome back.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 4.0, district highlights. 4.1 is introduction of new staff and Superintendent Jacobus will start us off.
Thank you. I'm happy to start the introductions. We have some great folks and we're really pleased to introduce our new leadership group for this year. And I wanted to start with Christine Schaefer. As you know, Christine has been selected to take on the role of Assistant Superintendent. It's a structure that we had in place a number of years ago and as we looked at restructuring with different positions and as Mike Vogel was retiring, we were very fortunate then to move into an Assistant Superintendent position and hire Christine. You all know Christine because she has been our Equity and Integration Coordinator and a principal in our district and in the district since 1999. So I'm really excited, the team and the support that we'll be able to provide to schools and I want to introduce Christine and welcome her.
Good evening, everyone, and I just want to tell you I am honored and very excited to start this role. You know, I've been in the district since 1999 in a variety of roles and so I know a lot of staff, students, families, and so I'm very excited to build on the relationships I have and continue having a positive impact on this district and I am absolutely thrilled. So thank you very much for the opportunity, I greatly appreciate it and look forward to working with all of you as well.
Next, I have the pleasure of introducing Napoleon Genaru. And Napoleon is coming in and taking over the duties of emergency preparedness and school safety and he is, we'll give him a minute, but he's a parent in our district and he has a law enforcement preparation and degree and then spent time as a park ranger and now does, was, coming to us from Red Wing Nuclear Power Plant as their safety person there. So we're really happy to have him on board. He's already hit the ground running and been out to schools and talking with our law enforcement agencies and we're very excited to have him and I think he'll be able to continue our process of refining and enhancing the safety and security that we have for all of our schools and our sites. So welcome.
I'm Napoleon, thanks for having me. I'm a parent in the district, my wife works for the school district as a substitute parent, so I have a vested interest in everything going well. Everyone I've worked with so far has been great and I look forward to meeting everyone and working through everything, so thank you.
And next, Mike Johnson, our Assistant Superintendent, will introduce our other leaders for this evening.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Brunet, Board members and Dr. Jacobus. I was supposed to introduce three of our leaders tonight, however, Mr. Nick Falby's wife had a baby about three hours ago, so can't believe he's not here.
We're doing the baby story.
Yeah. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Harold Scott. Harold, if you'd please come on up. He's our new principal at Cottage Grove Middle School. While he started his teaching career as a middle school teacher in St. Paul, he spent the last five years as a principal on special assignment in Rochester, but most recently at John Marshall High School last year. He supported school administrators in their 26 schools in Rochester, not just the schools, but also district level. He's been a champion for equity for all students in his career. Interestingly enough, he's been a 20-year resident of the district in 833 and his daughter had attended middle school at Cottage Grove Middle School. It was great to watch him in action last night at our Camp 6 Parent Night, so I'd like to introduce Mr. Harold Scott.
Hello, Madam Board Chair, Board members, Superintendent Munoz, Cabinet members, Pierce, and one community member, I think. He said all the stuff I was going to say, actually, so, but I'll just say that I have been in education for 20 years. I started out as an eighth grade world geography teacher. I've been a teacher leader, district-level administrator, responsible for programs like Avid, Gifted and Talented, EL Coordinator, so I bring many lenses and hats to this position. I'm a middle school person, I'm so grateful to have this opportunity to not only work with kids, but to be of service to folks delivering my community and families in my community. So I thank you for this opportunity, I'm very excited to be here and Camp 6 was a blast.
Next, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Arthur Williams. He'll be the new principal at Middleton Elementary School. Arthur had begun his teaching career in Bloomington Public Schools where he taught third and fifth grades for eight years and his first administrative job was in Kansas City. And after that, in 2013, he was hired at Winona area public schools to be the Jefferson STEM Elementary Principal. And in his role at Jefferson STEM, he created a school culture for learning, promoted a positive environment, and especially throughout the interview process and reference checks, it's his, that positive relationship that he started and continued with families and with the community at large to really help the students. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Arthur Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Very excited to be here. As Scott said, or excuse me, Harold said before me, Mike kind of stole the thunder and said everything that I was going to say, but a little more about my, just about the process of interviewing and being part of 833. I could tell right from the start, from the very first interview, that this was going to be a great place to work. Felt very supported by Mike and the team and I've had the opportunity over the past week to meet many staff people at Middleton and I can tell I'm going into a great family and I'm looking forward to continuing the great traditions that they have at Middleton. So thank you for the opportunity.
I won't give any more bio-information, I'd like to, I'd like to have Jim Smolkovich come up and he'll be speaking about Sarah Palatyczek, our new Activities Director at
We all bend over for this microphone when we come up. I'm Jim Smolkovich, Principal of the High School. Good evening Board members and Dr. Jacobus. I have the privilege of introducing a familiar face to a new role. Sarah Palatyczek is the new Activities Director at Eastridge High School, replacing Joel Olson, and we are very, very excited to have her join our Eastridge team, she's a great fit. The best thing about this is hearing from her saying, "This is my dream job." And it really is, she's passionate about the role she's going to take on, it's a very intense role and she's looking forward to the challenge, so please welcome Sarah.
Hello and good evening. Yes, I am extremely excited. Starting my 25th year in education and now transitioning into Activities Director at Eastridge High School is a dream come true. Growing up in District 833 and graduating from Park High School, being involved in so many activities and athletics, I am just honored to be able to give back to our community in this role. It has been an extremely busy month. At Eastridge, we have just a little over 100 sports activities clubs that we manage in our office and I've had some one-on-one coaching meetings to learn about their philosophies, their expectations. I've met with student groups and I've been to all of our fall parent coach meetings, so it's been a great start. It's busy, we had our first home soccer game this evening, so it's going to be a great adventure and I look forward to serving at Eastridge High School. Also, our admin team there is just amazing, they're great to work with, so supportive, so thank you very much for this opportunity.
5.0, public comment. At this time, individuals may speak to the school board on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. The board will not respond to or discuss your concerns. Character abuse or specific complaints identifying staff, students, or task force members will not be permitted. The superintendent may be asked to prepare a response to your concerns and our policy allows for three minutes. If there is anyone tonight who would like to approach the board. Seeing none, we will move on to our consent items. All consent items are considered routine and non-controversial by the board and will be approved by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, but prior to the meeting, board members had the opportunity to review them and may have requested that one item be moved to an action item and none have been moved tonight, so we will approve our consent agenda as presented, so I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. It's moved by Sharon and second by Heather. All right, all of in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Al.
And Ron is going to talk about our gifts.
Well, one of the things that we just approved within our consent agenda item is item 6.6, and that's the acceptance of our gifts. Every month, we get gifts provided to us from our citizens within our district and already our first month of the new 2018-2019 school year, we had $31,290 in generous donations and I went back, because that just seemed like a big number, and I went back and looked at last year's first year, first month of school, and we only had $13,000. So it was a big number, so again, we want to thank all those generous donors. And again, at the end of our meeting tonight, we do play the folks, you know, kind of the credits of who has donated, so if you see those folks in the community, please thank them, not only for our kids, but for our district. And the other thing I always would be remiss in not say is that we also want to thank people that give their time. You know, that doesn't show up on a piece of paper, but without those volunteers in our schools, helping our administrators, helping our teachers, this school would not exist, so we thank you for all those countless hours that are donated every month.
7.0 workshop items that will be an agenda item on our, eh, not July 26th, September something. Sorry, it says July 26th, so it's our September meeting.
Yes.
September 6th, there we go. 8.0, information items. 8.1, financial update from our Director of Finance, Dan Pyne.
This is why everyone has stayed, our administrative group, to see Dan's presentation.
Because he's going to tell us a joke, right? Welcome our new people with a joke.
Good evening, Board Chair Brunet, members of the school board, and Dr. Jacobus. Tonight's financial update is focused on enrollment and in Minnesota, school finance enrollment is probably the most pivotal, important thing in determining and maintaining a district's financial status, or in other words, our fund balance. I went home, 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 this last weekend for a class reunion, so I went back to St. Peter for 40 years later and we were at the golf course tonight and I remember something that happened a long time ago when I was young, and when I was young, I played a lot of golf at St. Peter's Little Golf Course and, I don't know, I was probably 20, 21, and I was going to go play a quick nine and this old man asked if he could play along. And you know, I was kind of like, I really didn't want him to, but I said sure. And he did really well and we played along and I was playing very, very well, I remembered, and I got to the last hole, but then I got stuck behind this big pine tree and he looks at me and he goes, "Well, when I was your age, I would hit it right over the tree." And I said, "Over that pine tree?" And I said, "Well, he's not going to challenge me, I'm going to do that." And of course, it didn't go high enough, it didn't get to over the top, hit the tree, went bounding around and got stuck in the tree and I, and I looked at him and I kind of gave him a dirty look, he goes, "Wow." Actually, when I was your age, the tree was only three feet tall. So it kind of tells you that you need to really get the whole story before you make any decisions, especially when you're trying to break the course record. And that's what we look at enrollment a lot by, we really want to get the true story before we really decide, you know, how we're going to end up financially and how we're going to look next year too. As I said, enrollment drives our, drives our, the largest part of our, drives our largest revenue as we take, and I tell you this probably every month, but maybe some people don't know, but you take your number of students, multiply it by the state basic formula plus referendum revenue and things like that, and that comes up with our largest revenue source. And in our case, we multiply it by about $10,000 per ADM or about $9,200 per APU. What's an APU? An APU is an adjusted pupil unit, what's an ADM? ADM is basically a student unit. An APU is an adjusted pupil unit because they give more weight to those, to the kids in seventh through 12th grade. So I'm looking at this all the time, I had a superintendent in a different district who would, he said, "Geez Dan, you look at that enrollment count like a stock ticker," and that's back when we had stock tickers, back in the old days. But for us, it drives, with our levies, it drives about $187 million in revenue, so it's always good to know if you have the right revenues. So with that in mind, I focus a lot of time and worry about how many students we have and whether or not we're going to get paid for them. So the other way enrollment will affect us is our expenses and our biggest expense is staffing and of course, we base our staffing on our enrollment, so unfortunately, we have to do our staffing earlier in the year when we're just guessing on enrollment, so we're really hoping that what we projected is going to be the right number. And of course, if we don't have enough staff in place to cover all the enrollment, then we'll have to add as we go. It's a little tougher when you have smaller size units in schools because you can't, you don't have the flexibility you have with a larger school, so if you might have five kids going into a school, suddenly it pops up that you have to add another section. So those are the kind of things we look at all the time. So with that in mind, if you look at the first, the first part, the handout in the packet first, this is our actual counts as of, this is what we have in the system as of, for next year, for the coming school year that starts next week, the week after, as of 8/15/2018. Now, if we look at that, you can see, if you just look at the raw totals, I just put that in there to find the difference, see who's where. This may change a little bit as we, will change a lot as we see people coming and going, but it's showing a total enrollment of about 18,649. That would be students, just straight students, not necessarily ADMs, but pretty close to that. How is that relative to, you know, the conversation tonight? Well, for next year, I budgeted 18,517. So at first glance, it says, "Oh, we already have more in the system than we budgeted, but we don't have all the drops in there yet, there'll be more kids coming in," but it's better than being the other way, that's for sure. So we, so if you ask, "What did you budget for?" And I budgeted for about 18,517 students and right now, as I look at the counts every day, wow, this one was run last week, we're about 18,649, so that's good news right now. Now, that doesn't count the adjustments we made for PSEO, but it also does not include our preschool, special education children that we also get paid general education dollars for. And it doesn't, it does include the pre-K, school readiness plus, and the voluntary pre-K. So as far as next year, as you know, we're always working on three budgets, we're always looking at what happened, we're always looking at what happened last year as we're waiting for the auditors to come, as we prepare all the reports. We're always looking at, you know, what the one we're currently in, which we started on July 1st, and that's the enrollment I'm looking at right now, and then we're always looking at the next budget ahead of us and we'll talk about that next month when we talk about the levy, because we'll be levying for another budget year in front of us. So then, more interesting to me at this time was looking at how we ended up. About two weeks ago, MDE, Minnesota Department of Education, published the first run of student counts. And this is earlier than they usually do it, but this is always kind of a stressful time because it tells us what MDE has in the system and if they just take whatever they have in there, that's what they're going to pay you for. So you really want to see if it's close to what you thought you had in the system and when you have this many students, it's really tough to always stay on top of that. And usually, it looks like it's pretty far off, we've been, you know, working on some systems and getting things to work a little better, but, so right now, for last year, last year, which just ended, which we don't have audited yet and don't have our final fund balance yet, MDE shows that we have 18, we had, we had 18,490 ADMs. And I looked at what we budgeted for last year in the final budget and we budgeted 18,490. So we're budgeting the right amount. Now, that's, that 18,490 is going to change a little bit, but it's more likely going to go up and not down. So that was finally, you know, this is the first time in three years, I think, that we've actually nailed that and it just takes a little different dart system as we go through it, are we going to count this month and not that month, but it does give us a lot more confidence with what's going on. So bearing that in mind, so then, right away, that tells me that our revenue should be pretty good for next year, for last year, final, because most of our revenue is run by that number. And all the levy revenue is always a year behind, so we know that's okay. So really, the only wild card is going to be special education revenue and fees and things like that. While we did get some bad news from the MDE because, and because of a, I don't know, it's a quirk or whatever, but the proration, there wasn't enough money to fulfill all the special education fund, special education funding, so our funding is going to be down about $360,000 from last year. Now, if they, I believe that they'll get it back, but I don't think our auditors will let us recognize it, so that would be a hit against our, our general fund of $360,000. And then also, we have to reduce our school nutrition charge back by $300,000, I'm just kind of giving a heads up, and that's a long story for various reasons, and we're working on that, but that would also reduce our fund balance. Now, the good news is, we looked at, I talked to CFAC on Monday, Systems Financial Advisory Committee, and in looking at all the expenses, I went through every, pretty much every object code we have, it looks like our expenses came in about 0.32% within budget, which is pretty amazing and I think Chris Blackburn deserves a lot of credit for that in budgeting the salaries and stuff, because to be within, within less than a half percent within on a $240 million budget, that's pretty good. So that little bonus there picked up maybe 700,000, so final, now final, all around what it means is we'll probably end up pretty much right at the projected fund balance we had, about 5.3, 5.4 million dollars, and there shouldn't be a lot of surprises. And then, I guess we'll know more once we get through the audit, but so far, it's looking okay and they've just got a few quirks we have to work on with the state. Otherwise, besides that, that's really what I had for you tonight was just to look at the enrollment numbers and to look at last year, and it looks pretty good, we'll get, pick up a little bit more revenue there and it looks like we'll be okay so far for this year. So I will entertain any questions.
Just a quick comment, because I attended the CFAC meeting on Monday and for those committee members, you know, we thank them for their work, but a lot of them come to us with business backgrounds from the private sector and they were in awe with these budget assumptions and actuals too. To have a budget that big, to come in at 0.3% and to hit your, you know, your growth rate on the target, that's a testament, Dan, to your leadership and your team and I thank you from a board perspective, I feel very confident in your ability and what you lead us for this district, so thank you for your work.
Well, as I said though, we know it's wrong.
No, you've set the bar pretty good now, so.
They don't know everything exactly, that's for sure.
I also want to echo, and I'm glad my mentorship of Dan has started to really come to fruition, but no, he has done a phenomenal job and Chris in the department, but also in helping and our school administrators, looking at, we are so tight on our budget and Dan has come forward and talked to everyone and they've really watched the budget, I think the way we look at that and continuing to condense when we can, as we told our voters we would after the last levy election, I think it's coming together. We still have a few more years that, but we're moving in the right direction and this was the happiest August that I've seen, Dan. I think, but the MDE numbers, again, it's amazing that we were right on with all of the fluctuation and so I'm really proud of Dan's work in the department and all of our district folks too, because this is still a major issue for us, but we're moving in the right direction, just as. But we're moving in the right direction, just as, as we've planned to and hoped to, so.
Thank you. Anyone else, though, quick? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
8.2, professional development update from our Director of Professional Development. Imagine that, Brian Booth.
Good evening, Board Chair Brunet, Board members, Superintendent Jacobus. The purpose of tonight's presentation, there's no slideshow that goes with this. So the purpose is for the board and for the public to learn more about the work that goes into the preparations for the start of the school year. All of our employee groups start racing, sprinting towards the start of the school year in the month of August, and professional development is a key component of that. I'm honored to share some of the highlights of the past few weeks of some, some busy times in District 833. So kind of the, the format that I'll go through is I'll share a little bit about an event or a training that we've had, and then I'll stop and see if there's any questions that you might have as we go through. So the first kind of big moment of professional development that took place was actually right at the tail end of July. We started training our K through 2 teachers in a new math resource called Bridges. The curriculum adoption will replace the Envision Math curriculum that's been used in our district K through 2 for the past 10 years. We've trained 120 K through 2 teachers so far, and just blessed that they have been able to get in this summer on some pretty short notice as well. We have about 120 teachers still to go, and they'll be trained during workshop week. The training's important because Bridges is a complex resource. It requires workstations for small group or independent work. It requires some components for shared math. There are new assessments in there and other teaching techniques that maybe are a little different than a traditional math resource. And so our trainers that have come in from the Bridges company have been very impressed with our teachers' knowledge about number sense and number and operation. And we have, I think it's a pretty progressive resource selection, and so they've, they've been excited about the work that's been laid to, so that our teachers can implement such a complex resource. So that's the Bridges adoption. I'll stop there if there's any math questions.
I think it is important, as Brian pointed out, when we adopt a new curriculum, it's not easy as far as whether you've been teaching math for 20 years. The, the new curriculums have really looked at the best in, in learning theory and research and, and pulled together a number of methodologies that, that it's not that our teachers can't learn that quickly, but it takes that, that time to really delve into it. So as Brian mentioned, I'm really proud of the staff coming back and really digging in. And we're really optimistic about some of the, the difficulties we might have had with certain students and moving them deeper into math and in the rigor in this curriculum may be helpful. But also, every time a teacher goes through that new adoption and new learning, it just adds to their so-called toolkit in the classroom, so. And Brian has led some great training on that.
Okay. So the next training event, our teacher group wasn't the only professional group that was getting ready to come back to the school year. Our paraprofessionals met on August 2nd. Our district invested time with our paraprofessionals because they do such important work with our students. I need to recognize Patty Trundle and the work that she does with our paraprofessionals in setting up this training. We had approximately 70 paraprofessionals attend the training on August 2nd. The courses offered were about bullying prevention, effective uses of technology in the classroom, school safety and security, and tools to positively reinforce behavior. These early August courses were kind of a follow-up to the training that we offered in June as well, where we offered training in the area of technology, math, literacy, and behavior. So we've invested quite a bit of time with our paraprofessionals because they are such an important part of District 833. Any questions on paraprofessional? All right. Keep rolling through. This is, the calendar gets filled up. I'm just getting started, guys. Said I have 15 minutes. We'll see if I can stay within that timeframe. We had our teacher leader training each year to help our schools prepare for their annual school improvement planning, or their SIP process. We bring in all of our ATPPS, or our Q Comp, teacher leader stipend positions. The purpose of this half-day training is to give our teacher leaders information about school, district, or state-level data to help them set goals for the school year. We had approximately 150 teachers attend the training, about four to six per site, depending on the, the size of the school. After the training was over, we had about 70 teachers stay, and those were our elementary teachers, and complete the last day of our elementary curriculum redesign. As you know, the last couple of summers, we've done a lot of work in the area of unpacking benchmarks and creating success criteria as a part of our standards-based instruction. We tied those two days together because the data and the unpacked documents really do belong together. This was an important day for our teacher leaders because then they work with their principals to create school improvement plans and set ATPPS goals for the year.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Were the MCA results available to you?
We have our internal information. We, for our, we, we do get our internal results immediately, you know, after a student takes the test because it is done online. And so we've had our internal numbers for a while, but the state has not yet published MCA results.
Do you know when they're doing it?
Yes, they will be, the embargo is lifted on August 30th.
Okay.
So they're, embargo, yes, very important phrase. So we cannot publicly discuss any results, but we can share with our internal staff so that way they are prepared and they use that information for.
So no standards on a stick this year at the fair.
They might be handing that out still. Yeah. Would you want to go to the fair?
No.
All right. Our next event is the Probationary Teacher Academy. It's a three-day event on August 13th through 15th. We had approximately 125 of our probationary teachers attend a variety of trainings to help them develop their skills. Probationary Teacher Academy is geared towards teachers who are still pretty new to our system, so they are year one, year two, or three probationary status. Continuing contract status teachers are also welcome to attend. The goal is to try to onboard them with the training they need to feel a part of, the SoWashco team. At the elementary level, we offer trainings geared towards literacy foundations and other ways to develop relationships with students. At the secondary level, we offered our Avid strands. These trainings would typically, we typically would need to send somebody to an Avid institute, but because of the skills and experience in our district, we're able to offer internal classes. Of course, none of that is possible without Molly Lester, who we know and love, and she helped organize those amazing Avid trainers. The highlight, of course, being the CLRT course taught by Maria Toll. Jill Nordstrom taught a class for us as well. They were just fantastic offerings. And Christine Schaefer worked to set up kind of a partnership with Stillwater where we had some folks from Stillwater come in and attend those classes as kind of a professional development exchange program. So we'll be cashing that in at some point, I hope, in the future. Better be something good.
Brian, will you just mention CLRT for maybe the audience with that?
Like, yeah, culturally, linguistically responsive teaching. Yeah. All right. Good old Probationary Teacher Academy. We're only halfway through, guys. This is our August all the time. All right, New Teacher Academy. New Teacher Academy was this Monday, and so it was an exciting start to the week as we welcomed 105 new teachers to our district. On Monday morning, we had a welcome breakfast in partnership with the UTSWC. All of our new hires, their principals and cabinet members were there. It was just a, a good way to start the week and to celebrate our new, our new teammates. The New Teacher Academy is just a great day. Keith, Mike, and Julie each had an opportunity to greet the new staff members, and they still came back to work, is what I understand, most of them. So you did okay, okay there, Keith. One of the best moments, Julie asked of our new hires if all of the former 833 graduates, if there were any 833 graduates, and about 20 of them
Wow.
were, are part of our system, graduated from our district. And so it's pretty cool that they're coming back home. Following the breakfast, staff met their site mentors. They had a chance to then head back to their schools and then, and then later on came back for some training to onboard them. And of course, we cannot get through New Teacher Academy without acknowledging the hours and hours and hours that our HR team puts in to make sure that all of our new hires are there. And so Kim Vane and Andrea, they just, I mean, all the time, they're getting through and getting our new staff ready to go. And so Kevin, your team is amazing. Thanks for all that work. So that's New Teacher Academy. All right. This week, we also had our elementary assessment days. On Tuesday and Wednesday, our elementary staff members returned to work. It was exciting to walk back into the schools and see our, our teachers engaging with either former students or their new students. The goal of their assessment days is our classroom teachers get half, half an hour to conduct some assessments, but more importantly, get to know their students and talk to them about their summer and get them excited for the school year. This one-on-one time is invaluable for a teacher. Some schools even turned this event into a bit of a party. I understand Pine Hill had some food trucks and celebrated last night with their families. A good way to just start the year. When you talk about culture and climate and personalization, I don't think there's any better way to say we're personalized when you get one-on-one time with your teacher. Our elementary specialists meet during this time together as teams to work through curriculum and standards and professional development. I'll share, my personal highlight was walking into a professional development session with our elementary music teachers. They were working on an authentic assessment on how students can read quarter notes, eighth notes, and sixteenth notes. So I'll share personally, I have never learned to read music. I don't, it was never, I'm music illiterate. And after watching the lesson for about 15 minutes, I can now read a quarter note, an eighth note, and a sixteenth note. And they weren't intentionally instructing, they were working through a lesson together, and I was just observing. And so that lesson was put, put on by Molly Feigl from Middleton. There was even some weird notes in there about mozzarella, it was just a weird song. But I'm, I'm in, I learned a lot, and it was an enjoyable experience.
And Brian showed me a video of, they, they wrote a, a song about the melody to make that work and, and use different tapping and things like that. And it, when you watch teachers, the enthusiasm was just outstanding. And the other aspect about those days, I thank you again for that calendar change. It was a, a kind of a leap into a different type of look for the calendar, but this is our second year on the assessment days, and, and I hear just nothing but positive comments from teachers and, and parents as we, I think each year will get better, just as Brian said, that schools are looking at different ways to invite parents, and at the same time, they, they work with kids to get to know them.
I will say, as a parent of an elementary student, having gone, we, we enjoyed our back-to-school day, and my daughter did her literacy assessment and saw all of her, she was excited, her math teacher was back, even though she won't have her again this year. And she always likes to go and check in all the rooms and check in on all our teachers. And she checked in on the nurse and the social worker and everybody. She, she covered all her bases. She felt really good. Everybody was back this year, so she was happy to be back. So it was, it was very exciting. I will also shout out, nearly 20% of our new hires were like of our district. So I feel like our Grow Your Own program needs a little more credit. Like, we are so great, people come back either in board member capacity or teacher capacity, staff capacity.
Cabinet level.
And
Kelly back there.
I forgot to say this to Christine, but I was at Park when she was at Park, so I'm excited about that. So, yeah.
Kudos to you.
Well, it was a fun, it was a fun couple of days. Okay, now we're caught up to today, so, and we've still, we've got more to go. Still just warming up. I don't have any golf jokes, I was trying to Google some so I could follow Dan, but none of them were appropriate. So I'm just going to move on. Office coordinator training this morning. Kristin Cachel from our HR team helped to organize a meeting of the office professionals from across our district. They had a chance to hear from various departments about changes or important announcements. And then members of our technology and teaching and learning departments shared some updates regarding CSOW and Schoology. This was an important time for our office professionals as they get ready for the school year, and they have asked for and had some time to talk through and help each other with various aspects of their job. So it was a, it was a fun morning, and we thought it would be a short presentation, talking through Schoology, and it lasted for about 45 minutes. And I think they were really excited and honored that they're going to be a part of the kind of help process if families run into some issues or have some questions.
And one of the aspects of them getting together, Kevin has arranged for the folks to come together on any of our in-service days for teachers. When I did, when I went out and did my meeting, my personalization-type meet with Keith conversations last year, in talking with, with folks, they, they wanted to get together, and they asked, could we get together during training days? And so Kevin took that and arranged for throughout the year, they'll be meeting during that time, having some training, but also just that time to talk about, how do you do this? And what happens in your school when this happens? That, that collegial PLC, professional learning community time that they don't normally have. So that's going to be a nice addition for them this year.
Kevin, I have one question. I'm familiar with Schoology, but what is CSOW?
So CSOW is a program that we're using in some of our elementary classrooms. It is basically an online portfolio that the teacher can help collect pictures, videos, or other artifacts, and keep track of them in an online portfolio that then moms and dads, parents, guardians would have access to tied to their specific child.
Very cool.
It's a, it's a pretty cool program for our teachers because it opens up that lines of, line of communication. And for parents as well, because then you feel like you know what's happening during the day. I'll say, last year, I had a kindergartner whose teacher used CSOW, and so I felt like I knew what was going on. And then my third grader, they, they weren't utilizing CSOW, so then I would have to rely on asking her, how was your day? You know, that question? Yeah. Never get a right answer. I had no idea what was going on. And so it's, it's a good way to kind of partner for our parents.
Very nice.
All right, I've got two to go. We're almost there. I swear. Okay. Looking ahead, next week, everybody's back. Many of our elementary sites are going to be training staff in standards-based instruction. We'll be presenting to the board in October about our progression this year through standards-based instruction. But the training next week for elementary staff will help them learn about the philosophy behind standards-based instruction, grading and reporting, and how it's being communicated to families. Our principals are taking the lead on this training as well in partnership with us. We're excited to work with staff on this important work. Nervous, get to go around and do all kinds of presentations. My first one, Monday morning, Arthur, Arthur and I are going to, oh, he's gone now. Oh.
They got scared.
I mean, I mean, he's, okay.
They got scared when you said you had pages.
Yes. Get out now when you can. Okay. And then the last one, at the secondary level, we'll be doing training on Schoology as well to help our staff roll that out as the school year starts. Our technology team has been working hard. Bob is on email constantly helping troubleshoot any of our technology issues while hundreds of families are getting enrolled. It's just been amazing to watch that. And so now our tech team and our teaching and learning department are going to start turning their attention to our teachers. The goal of the training is to help our teachers learn more about the core components of Schoology, how to grade, and share information with students and parents. Todd Highland and Ed Harkness have taken a lead on this, and I think, I hope, they're ready to go for next week.
Question for you there.
Yes.
Does Schoology have my dream capacity where the children take a test and it goes right into the gradebook?
It sure does.
Oh, that's wonderful.
It sure does.
Wonderful.
Yes, the automatic scoring of an assessment and feedback for the student-teacher.
Good.
Yes. Down to the item level that we can look back.
Yes.
All of these trainings, I just need to give a shout out to Peggy Joswiak and Bonnie Crawford, who've helped so much, in particular with the math resource. They have, they're a couple of our office coordinators here within the District Service Center. And the amount and the number of boxes that have been delivered and that they've had to help organize and sort is overwhelming. And then I have a long list of all this other, all the training that's taken place, but there are other things that I don't even know about that HR, transportation, nutrition services, facilities, maintenance. All of these groups are onboarding new staff, training current staff, preparing for their, their roles this year. And so it's been a busy summer, but we're proud of all the work that's taken place.
When I asked Brian to, to update you on this, I think it's really important as our public sees that, that there really isn't a summer break, not three months. June, we're training and finishing up the year and all of the things with staff members. July, it slows a bit and people do things on their own. And then this all happened since August 1st. And so really, we're back, and, and there are so many things that take place, and we still don't have time to really spend the time we'd like to getting ready for that first day of school and, and knowing that the next training opportunity is later in the school year. So it's very impressive, and as you, you come around throughout the summer every day, this room is utilized for training and different things that are happening through the building. So we're ready to go, we're excited about the school year, and thanks, Brian, for all the organization.
Thank you. Nine point O discussion items, we don't have any this evening. Ten point O our action items. Ten point O are action items. Ten point one is the approval of employee health insurance from our Director of Human Resources, Kevin Witherspoon.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight asking the board to award the contract for employee group health insurance for the two-year period from January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2020, to Preferred One, at an aggregate premium rate decrease of 6% for the 2019 plan year and a gap of 6% premium increase for the 2020 plan year. So I'll just give a little background, it's, it's in your administrative report here, but according to the Health Insurance Transparency Act, we have to go out 150 days out for bid when a contract ends. And our contract with Health Partners will end December 31st, 2019, 2018. And so we went out for bid, we use Gallagher as our broker. And so they went out and got bids from five health insurance vendors, Health Partners, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Medica, Preferred One, and Public Employees Insurance Plan, otherwise peep. We opened them on May 1st, the bids on May 1st with three members of the Teachers Union present. We then asked Gallagher to go out and solicit bids for a second round of bids and those were opened by the district on May 10th, 2018. Preferred One was clearly, clearly the best option in terms of both services and cost of the district with an aggregate 6% decrease and then an maximum cap increase of 6% for the next following year. Administration recommends acceptance of the Preferred One two-year contract for health insurance 2019-2020. I've also included in the plan here just some information. So the proposed bids from Health Partners is, is present and the one from Preferred One. And then on the bottom is just our current, current rates, just for your information. Questions?
First, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So.
So Katie and Chair? Okay. Any questions, comments?
So it's a pretty big jump. So do you have a feeling for that or do people have to change providers or is it?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so one of the things that was so beneficial for us is that not only do we get that huge, you know, decrease in, in premium rates, nothing will change in terms of providers. There's one provider, I think, in San Francisco, chiropractor, that's different, but otherwise everyone, everything else is the same.
It's amazing.
And just an overall question or comment, especially going through negotiations last round, I don't want to mislead the public by thinking that the savings is going to be just brought right to the bottom line, because many of these savings dollars were reinvested in wages for our employees and we still have another whole set of bargaining units that are gonna be coming next that have to leverage these dollars. So, you know, at, at some point, that's the balancing act of, you know, when you think of a total compensation package, your wages and your benefits, this definitely, we had a feel that this was coming, that helped us to close a few of our negotiations, which helped the wage side of the equation. But, you know, we've learned by history, been here long enough to see where we've done the contracts, you usually get the big savings the first year. I will guarantee you, they will make up their money next year. You know, that 6% is probably going to be asked. So again, I bring that up to, in transparency, that that's what we're gonna be dealing with. So again, I don't want to, you know, diminish the work that's been done and it's definitely an advantage for us. It helped us to put dollars into wages and I don't want that to be forgotten.
I think also for employees that might be hearing this for the first time, that the importance of the fact that you'll be able to go to a Health Partners clinic, they, they honor Preferred One, the change will be, well, I'll have to fill out new paperwork and receive a new card, but after that, the same benefits apply, the same rates. And so this is a wonderful aspect of a change to not have to change providers and all the other things that, that I've been through in the past in my career. So it was really outstanding, the bid that came in, the ability for us to go with a provider that it can be seamless for our employees. So if they're out there thinking, oh my gosh, if they've gone through it before, if it's a whole new provider system, it's a tough, tough thing. This one is going to be.
And thanks for bringing that up. As soon as it's approved by the board, we actually have a rollout plan already getting going and so we'll start rolling that out as soon as possible, so.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ten point two, approval of policies 504 and 510.1. Assistant Superintendent Mike Johnson.
Good evening, good evening again, Chair Brunet, board members, and Dr. Jacobus. Here for approval on policies 510.1 and 504 this evening. We reviewed these with the first reading two weeks ago. When we had questions and comments at that time that had arisen, we'd gotten input from Assistant Principals and Principals at our first principals' meeting on the 13th, refined a little bit with Trevor Helmers to check and then back to the APs and principals and then finally to board members where throughout the week, we've been able to adjust and edit a bit to today. So I've invited Ginger Garsky and Jim Smolkovich this evening to discuss or to have, if you had any questions, that they would be able to answer, cause they've been working very closely with their APs on this, but also they've been part of this process with the, the alterations and the edits as well, especially for policy 504. What I'd like to do this evening, if that's okay with you, is I believe 510.1 is the first policy on your, on your laptop. That is the athletic activity and participation. And just to, just to recap very, very briefly, two weeks ago, that there has been no changes to this, this was actually a very good conversation. Simply, if we had a lowest level team at a high school, a ninth grader, a C team by chance, and let's say we're playing softball and we had eight players and you need nine, the coach could ask a player or two from the eighth grade to come up and play eighth grade, eighth graders could come to that ninth grade team or C team only so we could field the team. Otherwise, we, those eight kids who were on that team wouldn't be able to participate. So we wanted to pull those kids up. Those two eighth graders would not be bumped up to a higher level team. They would stay with that C team or that ninth grade team, so they would not lose, there would not be other students already in the program at the high school losing opportunities. So that's our first one. Any comments or questions and if we're able to proceed with that one first?
I appreciate that very much. Thank you for adding that.
No, thanks to the activities directors and coaches as well.
Anyone else? All right, 504.
Okay, now we're off to 504. As stated before on 504, this is where we spent our most time with the editing and checking a little bit with Trevor Helmers when appropriate, but with the APs and yourselves. First of all, with the highlighted portions, with two, Roman numeral two, C, and one from two weeks ago, boiling that down a bit to, to two sentences there. Roman numeral two D, we did not alter from the first reading whatsoever regarding the hats. Number three, the third thing is we had taken the entire procedures part out, because as we've worked through policies in the past few years, we want to get the policies out, or the procedures out of policies. But as I've illustrated in communications with each of you that, and speaking with Ginger and Jim and the, the others, we'd, we'd form a, a team of select principals, elementary principal, middle school principal, high school principal, assistant principals, probably from each of the secondary schools, to just go right in and take care of all those procedures, make sure they're consistent and appropriate and in fitting with the policy. So we just have, you know, nondiscriminatory language, so on and so forth. And then finally, the final change was very minor, but that was that part F where we wanted to talk about notification. If a child does violate the policy, it's that parent notification. Does that entertain any discussion? Keith, go ahead.
That, I had questions about procedures. We do post those on our website by the policies, so parents are able to see the procedures as well, they're just not adopted. As a policy, it gives us a little flexibility as if, in implementing, following the policy if there's any changes. But, but parents are aware of policies or have the ability to go and, and look at them as well.
And we've looked at culturally, students wearing head jobs?
Exactly.
Okay.
And you also mentioned that they've collaborated between buildings to be consistent on those?
Correct. And I would, I would leave that to, we do meet very often, I think Pat, we talked about this two weeks ago, but Jim and Ginger would agree, they meet often as an admin team, but they also meet as, as a, as a larger group as well. So if one of the two would like to address you, go ahead.
Yeah, and I believe the, the question was in regard to consistency and we're all on the same page and we do communicate very frequently and we, and we go back and we discuss these things with our assistant principals. And so we are always trying to stay as consistent as possible.
We really appreciated having the opportunity to have our feedback heard and to work closely in making the changes so that, as Sharon Van Leer just said, that the wording is more unbiased in, in both in terms of gender, culture, whatever it is. I think this is gonna help us to really work well with our students and families. We appreciate it. Good job.
I will say, as someone who had a lot of concerns about the policy revisions that were being brought forward and have had several conversations about the policy, I'm really happy with the proposal. Generally, I like really explicit policy language, however, there just wasn't a way to get at explicit policy language that I didn't feel could potentially down the road lead to either gender bias or race or ethnicity bias or potentially even putting us in a position where we might be discriminating towards a protected class of students. And so I, I'm really happy with the conversations I've had and with what I've heard, because I think that this meets our need of having a dress code policy, cause we need one, but also gives our principals the criteria that they need in order to decide when they enforce it and, and do that in a consistent way across our district. So I really like that.
I like the policy as it's written and I know that there will be some work done on the procedures. One thing as a parent that I noticed, well, actually I started looking into to see what other districts do for policies and I could easily go to any school's website, click on dress code and find a dress code. It had a very similar policy to ours that was very simple. And then you went down a little bit and there was more like what is acceptable, what is not acceptable, a little bit more maybe for the parents to be like, if your child's walking out the door, you can be like, hey, you know, go ahead, but know that this could be against it. And I know as my daughter started middle school, she wanted to wear a tank top to school. And I'm like, oh, well, let me check. And I could not find where it said if it was acceptable to wear a tank top. So one suggestion I would have would to be that maybe once we, once you guys meet and you have more of those procedural, maybe some more guidelines, that something be put on at least the middle school and high school's website, not just our district website, but an actual link on the school's website that says what to, what they can expect. Because I think, especially as a parent, I don't want to send my child to school in something that could be dress coded, for lack of a better word, and then I have to come and bring clothing. I mean, usually, you know, in this position, I err on the side of caution with what I say, yeah, go ahead and go out of the house with her, I say, grab a sweatshirt, you know, just in case. But I, I know there was a slight frustration that morning when we're like, okay, can she wear a tank top to school? And it seems like such a simple thing, but in elementary school, the principle that she had was very straightforward with what was acceptable and what wasn't. So it was an easy yes or no, whereas when she started middle school, there just was no, like guideline and not being able to find anything, it can be, you know, stressful for the child, stressful for the parent. And there's those battles then that they say, yeah, well, other kids wear it, so I can wear it. So I guess just having something maybe a little more, I know we can't have exactly cut and dry, but a little more of what the procedure is, what we consider acceptable and not acceptable, once the principals talk and get that down would be helpful on all of the school's websites.
Would that be covered by the procedural language that you're talking about developing?
Yes.
That criteria?
Yeah, and just having a link to that so that kids and parents have a better understanding.
Correct. When we got it approved and when we collaborate, that's when we work with communications to be able to have that link so it's consistent for everybody.
Perfect.
So one of the things I, I feel really great about the second sentence, which we, procedures for implementing this policy shall be just applied in a nondiscriminatory, discriminatory fashion. So, and I would encourage you to consult with Heather, cause she had some really great learnings for me as we were thinking through the, you know, about the point of if I'm gonna send one student home with this, would I send all students home? Because they wore this, just how, how a tank top fits one kid, how a tank top fits another kid. Just, and I thought that was a great way of that, you know, nondiscriminatory. So I thought that was really a good thing. So you have to ask those questions and, and having a set of questions that teachers could ask themselves, is this, to make sure you're sending, you know, well, you get to wear one, but you don't because of your body size or how it fits you or whatever. So, so thanks for the opportunity, you know, the dialogue and we've learned a lot too and we're, it's, it's the front page article, we found out in the administrator magazine here, is appropriate attire. Districts loose dress codes to promote equity. But a lot of that is, those of us, I mean, I reach, are affected by these things and, and faced, you know, a lot of discrimination back in our day based on sexist policies. So I'm really happy to, to be thinking thoughtfully and providing hopefully reasonable guidelines and yet, you know, enough kind of common sense to move forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just thank you all for your work in making the changes that I think they're great too, actually. So I like that we took out kind of the battles with definitions and things like that, so thank you. All right, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 510.1.
And 504?
Do you want them both?
Yeah.
And 504.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Moved by Pat and second by Katie. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Eleven point O reports and comments, eleven point one is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I want to start with a quick construction update. As we near the beginning of school, we're completing our summer construction work and our two major projects, the new Altman Middle School construction and the remodel, remodeling work for Newavis-Fronteras Elementary School. Altman is in the final phases of work. We held, we held our Camp Six this week for incoming sixth grader, graders and a parent open house on Wednesday evening. The two days of Camp Six went very well. I was able to visit and speak with students who were excited to return to school and impressed with the new learning environments they will utilize when school starts in September. We had hoped to be a little farther along before Camp Six started in our parent open house, but we had a few minute, a few last minute delays with the completion of the terrazzo flooring, which kind of held some things up. And so as kids and parents came in, it had less of a finish feel than we were hoping, but everything is moving along for completion and will be ready to go prior to the first day of school. The comments regarding the school from parents were positive and we will be excited to welcome students on September 4th to a fully completed and wonderful school. And we hope to arrange for you as a board to come in next week and, and see the, the school as well. It's just, it's beautiful, the natural lighting is really wonderful. Teachers have been working hard setting up their classrooms and the furniture that you've heard Julie talk about a number of times throughout the school year, now to see it in place. There were a lot of positive comments from parents who hadn't maybe seen a, a school in a while, just the type of spaces and seating that kids will have. It's, it's really exciting. Newavis-Fronteras remodel is moving along at a frenetic pace. We knew the timeline for completing the work this summer was aggressive, but the contractors have done a great job of working at a fast pace and through the weekends and have completed a large number of structural changes and upgrades in a short amount of time. We'll be excited to welcome students to their future home in September. So I was through this week and, and the learning spaces that have changed and therefore the elementary kids and the kindergarten classrooms and the first grade area is just really wonderful. And, and they are, they are working as hard as they can and we, we will be at the point to, to be ready for kids to come to, to school. And it, and the natural lighting in the different areas is wonderful. So when that is completed next summer too, that'll just be a wonderful permanent home for kids and so we're excited as that moves forward. As I mentioned, when I was speaking about Altman Middle School, we had incoming sixth grade students attend Camp Six at all of our middle schools. And what Camp Six is, it's an orientation program for sixth graders to help them make the transition to a new school and a new grade level. The two-day orientation is facilitated by teachers and by seventh and eighth grade student leaders that are called web leaders, who help to welcome students to the school and answer questions while making positive connections with small groups of students. Each web leader has a small group and they take them through activities and they get to know them. And then the first day of school, in the first week, the web leaders are looking for the sixth graders when they have time between classes and that to help guide them. It really is a wonderful program that fits really well with our culture and climate and, and the welcoming environment. We have something similar at the high school called LINK. And LINK leaders were in today at the high schools, starting to be prepared for welcoming freshmen next year. for welcoming freshmen next year. Students learn with Camp Six about their schedule. They find their classes. They experience the sometimes challenging aspect of opening their lockers, which is, you know, you think that's a simple task, but even as a high school principal, that we spend time with LINK leaders and freshmen to just get the feel for the lockers and, and getting into them. Because it makes students nervous if they have a, a short passing period that they can get to their locker and come back. I did see that if you have a, a young person who needs locker decorations, Dana found some really interesting things for her daughters. They have now little disco balls that you put in the top of your locker and chandeliers. And you can really decorate them. It's pretty neat. So the staff and student leaders plan team-building activities and work hard to welcome students and prepare them for a great school year. Next week, as Brian mentioned, we'll have our welcome back for all our teachers and staff during our workshop week. And this year cabinet members and, and I will be working to individually meet with as many staff members as possible throughout the week to welcome them to the new school year. We will be attending and speaking at various department and school faculty meetings to welcome people back as well. And our goal during this first few weeks of school is to individually greet as many staff members as possible and focus on that personalization that, that we are working hard with, with students. So we haven't moved away for good from our big back-to-school event where we bring all the staff together. I think that's another wonderful aspect about our district where we have time where all staff members are invited to come together, renew friendships and, that they may not have seen if they're, if they transferred from schools. But this year, as we looked at moving ahead and, and some of the potential for what we're going to do on our in-service and training days in the fall, we want to do more of a personal touch and give people a chance to work in, in their rooms if they've been off for the summer and for folks that have been working 12 months getting ready to give them just more time in, in their departments and for their responsibilities. So we're excited about how fast the school year is coming. And saying goodbye to summer is always tough as far as weather goes, but it's really nice. We can't wait till the kids come back into school. It really starts, the energy level goes way up. And, and so I'm looking forward to the start of September.
Awesome. Thank you. Twelve point O, future meeting dates. Twelve point one, September 6th is our regular school board meeting. And twelve point two, September 20th is our regular school board meeting. And if there is no additional requests, information, concerns, we are adjourned.
Thank you.